All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here for our regular March Board meeting. We appreciate being hosted tonight by Fable Middle School. And particularly, we appreciate the presentations beforehand by the student ambassadors and the crew of the FMS morning show. So if you're not watching that on a regular basis, you're missing out. So be sure to watch the morning shows from the schools because they're very good. We appreciate that, those students and the initiatives that they're showing by being leaders in those areas. Very good. I'm told Mr. Alder is not going to make it tonight. And I guess Maria is not going to make it tonight, so we will proceed. We've got all of our board members here for our meeting tonight. Before you, you have in a folder, proposed agenda for tonight. And the floor will be open for a motion that we approve this agenda or make changes you see fit.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Okay. There's a flag behind us. So if you would like to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may have noticed by now, but our director of schools, Mr. Jones, is joining us virtually tonight. And we've had a little connectivity problems, but I think we'll be able to get his report and his inputs on any questions you might have tonight during the meeting. In one of the emails Ms. Williams sent out, you should have had the board minutes for our February 1st Board meeting. And the floor will be open to approve those or make changes you see fit.
May be approved.
Okay. Have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second. Any comments or changes or... Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. You also, in today's email, had the disbursements for the month of February. If you have not done so, you can take a moment and look those over. Ms. Williams is here to answer any questions, I am certain.
When is our fiscal year end?
June 30.
June 30. So all the items, I'm looking at the year-to-date revenue comparison, is everything that we've year-to-date received still in line with our projections, what we budgeted for on some of these?
Kind of, sorta. Where some of the tax revenues isn't really not caught up with us yet for the month of February, so that will probably catch us up in March. So, sorta, but not.
Does it look like some of these we might be short on? Or do you think it's all?
I think we're good right now.
Okay.
From what I can tell, that we seem pretty, is pretty good.
Are you thinking of any in particular?
Well, just looking at some of these tax...
Yeah, the taxes are probably a month or so behind.
Okay. Because from where we are, we're beginning March, we have three months left, and we're at half year-to-date versus what's, budget is half?
Yeah, we haven't got, like, a lot of the big tax monies that's coming yet that should be recorded in March.
Because property taxes were due the end of the year, but they're payable through February, through the end of February. So there's one of the issues, yeah.
Yeah.
Would be.
And people probably don't pay that until, right? It may be, we should give this a big, maybe a big chunk in this next catch-up.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, of course, there's the TISA mystery, right? Because they're actually, as y'all may recall, they're sort of sending money to systems, but also holding the option that they will do an adjustment. So we don't know if we get to keep all the money they're sending us, or if we're going to owe some of that back as the state does its books, right?
That's correct.
So it leaves the center, it leaves all school systems in a real dilemma.
Because they're not doing their true-up until July.
Right.
So we have received monies, but we're not guaranteed that we're going to be able to keep those monies.
Because that's a pretty significant discrepancy between those two numbers.
That is.
Yeah.
It is.
Yep.
So we will know more later, but Mr. Jones and Ms. Williams have warned us about that because no system knows exactly how that's going to settle up in July.
Okay. Yep.
But good questions. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other questions about the disbursements in this case? That was actually one of the reports.
Did I jump the gun?
No, it's okay. No, it's all about finances, yeah. Any questions about the disbursements for the month? I'll make a motion and we approve them.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Okay. Our principals' reports. Ms. Baker?
I'll start with our current enrollment. So with pre-K, we have 80, kindergarten 94, first grade 71, second grade 81, third grade 93, fourth grade 84, fifth grade 73, and that total says it, 576. Excuse me.
Do you need water? I've got water.
No.
I don't, but we've...
I appreciate that. So this week at Askins, we're celebrating Read Across America Week. We have different activities planned each day. The kids can dress up. Today was hat day. We have crazy song day. It's just trying to promote literacy in the school. Ms. Barnett has mystery readers on the morning show. The kids, kid identifies them, they get a treat. I know today she gave away some books to the students. We also have special community members and school members that are coming to read to our different grade levels throughout the week. So it's just, we try to really have fun this week, and it's a great week before spring break as well.
Yeah.
Also, on Friday, we have time set aside for each grade level for some reward time. We have a blow-up slide that we rented. We actually have sponsors. I'd like to thank White and Holland Insurance and the local for helping us with that, for our kids to have some fun on that day. So they're looking forward to that. Also, upcoming on March 28th, we have a big night planned at Askins. We have our art fest, and it will be from 3:30 to 6 o'clock on the 28th. We will have art displayed all throughout the school. Each grade level also has different activities that you can come in, make bracelets, different kind of art that you can do in the school. We have some food trucks that will be there. I know we have the coffee truck and cone of ice that will be there as well to help us have different options of things. We also will have local artists that will be there. They'll have booths set up for you to visit as well. So we look forward to that. It's going to be a big night, so y'all can come out and visit us on that.
That is awesome.
So that's all we have coming up.
That's really exciting. I saw the social media, a social media post about the art night, so I know you're trying to get the word out there to get folks involved. That's great. Should be fun. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCormick?
All right.
Thanks again.
Hey.
It's hard hosting this group, I know.
It is. I tell you, all rowdy bunch, for sure. So current enrollment number, sixth grade, we're at 70, seventh grade is at 83, eighth grade is at 86, for a total of 239. Spring sports are in full swing, no pun intended. They should really put me on the morning show. I feel like they're not utilizing that one. Anyway, baseball, boys soccer, softball are all currently starting their seasons. We're very fortunate to be back at Don Davidson, to be playing games down there. Huge thanks to Parks and Rec, our city leaders and administration, and FPU for helping get us back on track with that. Super, super appreciative of all that they've done. And schedules and roster should be on the school website on each sports athletic page. Students went on one of their behavior reward trips today. Seventh and sixth went to Cathedral Caverns. So we took about 93 kids underground today.
Wow.
And we made it back with 93. So I didn't have any phone calls this afternoon, so it was all good. Eighth grade's going to go on Friday. And from what I can tell, my own daughter was passed out on the bus. So I don't know how much they walked underground, but we must have got our monies worth.
That's awesome.
They were all smiles when they came back in, and most of them give out, so. Also, we were very fortunate to have the fifth grade come over last week when they came over for Ag Ed Day. I think something that maybe we started with Ms. Jean was, we've always kind of had the fifth grade come over and tour, but since they were already over for Ag Ed Day, we ran them through the building, they took a short little walk-through. And of course, they got to see the video that Ms. Bridget and the kids had put together. Had a little Q&amp;A session with me, just so that they could get to know just a little bit more about the school and hopefully make them feel a little more comfortable. We fed them ice cream for good measure, just in case that helps, so. But they had a blast that day as well. And finally, probably some of the most exciting news is, and you probably saw the social media post, is FMS did receive the distinction as being a reward school for 2022, 2023. When we initially saw the data back in the summer, you know, if you look at it enough, you can tell that when it's good and when it's not. And so we were super pumped then, but of course, we were waiting on an official, whenever they send their letter. But that comes as recognition for having outstanding student success in achievement and growth and earning a federal overall accountability greater or equal to than a 3.1 on a 4.0 scale. So, you know, very, very few schools are able to kind of tack that on to what they were able to do with last year's success. Super proud of all the hard work Ms. Jean, Ms. Baker did last year, as the administration, the teachers, the students. You know, things like this take a village and they don't magically happen. So, you know, it took a whole lot of people pulling together to be able to show that success and very well deserved.
Yeah.
So, super proud of the young and super proud of the kids.
I should have dug this up in advance. There are 140-something school systems in the state, but of course, middle schools, there would be many more than that. So hundreds. How many, do we know how many were named?
I don't off the top of my head, but it's a pretty select club, from what I understand. I know from my years at the high school, we were able to hit it, I believe, once in math, I think, maybe when Mr. Painter was here for some of it. But there's a lot of factors that go into that.
Right.
And so being able to even make that list is a pretty good accomplishment.
Right. It's a big, big deal. And like you say, a very exclusive group of schools that get that distinction. And when the, anytime the state puts out a special announcement, PR about something, you know it's a special announcement.
Yes, it is.
And so they've done that now, so.
It is.
Congratulations.
Kudos to them and everybody that had a hand in that last year.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank y'all.
Well done. Thank you. That's great. Mr. Perrin?
Good evening.
Hey.
I'll start with our enrollment as well. Freshmen, we have 73, sophomores 85, juniors 96, and seniors 87. And that makes a total of 341. As mentioned, Friday, February 23rd, we had our third annual Ag Ed Day, and that seemed to be a pretty, a really good success. Fifth grade got to come over, and then our FMS students went out there, and they did anything from talk about the dress, the official dress of FFA. We had some animals, had a turkey here, and they had some different games. There was a simulator for the kids to get in, so it was, it was a really neat day. We had mock interviews last week, and the interviewers really bragged on our seniors for their professionalism. And I, for one, and I know Ms. Dodson, we talked about what a great opportunity that is for our students to go ahead and get some experience with real business owners and people throughout the community. Basketball has ended. Both teams had a good season, and they were both, the boys and girls, were eliminated in the region tournament. Freshman Forum will be tomorrow night, and that starts at 6:00 PM. And that's for any incoming freshman, anybody that's interested in coming over to Fable High School. It's going to be a great night for the incoming freshmen to come in, meet their new teachers, hear a little bit about the school, hopefully have a better idea on how to select their classes and their focus area. We'll be giving out draw prizes for those students who complete what we call the passport. So if they go see each content area along with clubs and sports, we'll give them a little sticker, and then at the end of the night, their paper goes into a basket, and then we'll draw for various draw prizes on that. So I look forward to that. Also, later this week, it'll be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, which is March 7th, 8th, and 9th at 7:00 PM, we'll have the Wizard of Oz.
Right.
So that's Mr. Hobbs. And they've been working really hard on that. In fact, they're over there this afternoon, kind of going through their dress rehearsals. So I look forward to seeing that. We want to invite all of you to come if you can. Ms. Baker mentioned March 28th. Mr. Hobbs will also have some theater students over there, I believe during the day, and they'll be hosting an event where the students will rotate through different stations to learn about different aspects of theater. The stations will include history, mask-making, storytelling, costume fun, and theater games. So I look forward to that. And I know, I know he is too. Later this month, March 27th, we have the ACT for the juniors. So, yes, sir, that'll be here before we know it. And then, spring sports, I just wanted to mention when the first home game was for each spring sport. The boys soccer will play home here this Friday, March 8th, starting at 6:00 PM, and that'll be versus Lincoln County. And then, our baseball will play home, they'll play Cornersville Tuesday, March 12th, and that will start at 6:00 PM. Softball will play versus Moore County Thursday, March 21st, and that game starts at 6:00 PM. And then tennis plays their first match, and it'll be over at Moore County Tuesday, March 19th. And they start a little earlier, about 4:00 PM, so they can get through. Other than that, that's all I have.
All right.
And any rainouts? I just wanted to mention, any rainouts that we have, all the games are on our school calendar, so you can find them there. Any rainouts, please look to our Facebook and social media pages, because we know how spring is, and there's a ton of rainouts during spring, so.
Yeah. Always is. One of the great things about being back at Don Davidson Park, of course, is like on the opening game for FHS softball at 5, that's at 6:00, but at 5:30, the FMS baseball will be playing. So you can kind of get a twofer there and really get to see a lot of Tiger folks in one, in one location. That's really neat. Get to support them. So, thanks for that. Good deal. Any questions? Mr. Perrin? All right. Thanks.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate you. Mr. Jones, are you hearing us very well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Super.
Yes, sir, I do.
I'm not aware of any members of the public who asked to speak or make a comment tonight?
No, sir, none that I'm aware of.
Okay. We'll move on to our supervisors' reports. Ms. Dodson is here.
So, I'm going to go out of order and tell you something I shared with Mr. Jones that I thought was really cool. Mr. Perrin was telling you about our mock interviews where we had, like, about 78 students that participated. So we tried to get the whole senior class. We even had a special needs student who is non-verbal. He saw everyone else participating, and he wanted to do it too. So we made it happen. And so we went in, explained to the interviewer, and he went in with a student helper. He had a fantastic time.
Awesome.
And he was super excited. And so I actually sent Eric a picture because it was such a fabulous thing to see.
Life skills. That's awesome.
So, yes. And some of those students actually came out with jobs. One student was hired at the hospital. We had four individuals that came just to interview health science students.
Awesome.
I was also sharing with Shontae that we had some juniors that we also sent through when the seniors were through. So it kind of became an employment mentoring conversation as well. Also, our industrial maintenance students were actually given a commitment by an industry, they're going to go straight in the summer. They'll actually graduate next December with their industrial maintenance certifications because of their dual enrollments. And they were guaranteed that they could come to this industry in June and do their work-based learning as part of their industrial maintenance.
Nice.
And get paid. I think it was like, basically $20 an hour.
Nice.
And get credit and get paid at the same time. So mock interviews, always fantastic. Over 20 people from the chamber.
In that way.
So it's a great PR opportunity. Let you know about some grants. S3, we're finishing out. That will be actually finished in June. We chose, with the funds we have, we're going all technology. So we've got several things that we would have to be purchasing with GP. So guess what? We're going to purchase those things with our S3 and close that grant out. Also, when we were talking about freshman forum, we'd love for you to come by. We're going to have students there from industrial maintenance and welding as well, who are going to be at their tables recruiting students. So it's a great opportunity to kind of come through and talk to those students about the programs. Also, the industrial maintenance is going to be, you guys will hopefully get opportunity to see that CTU recruitment video that Ms. Bridget and her media students worked on that is fantastic. And we integrated the industrial maintenance into that. Know that Phase 2, that will begin at the ISM grant, is the next school year, is the integration of eighth grade students into CTU classes and career exploration. So we're very excited about that. We have the advantage of being on the same campus, which gives us a lot of flexibility in sharing resources between the two buildings, which is going to be great. Engineering, I want to brag on that as well. I know it's near to your hearts, you'll be excited about this. Of course, currently, we have, as part of the ISM, but 13 students that are actually sophomores. Mr. Eric Reynolds comes over. We made the commitment that those 13 students get two extra early post-secondary opportunities. The state will pay for them until your junior and senior year, and you get five. We give them two more. Eric teaches the class in the fall and the spring. The exciting news is, currently, we have 20 freshmen who are interested in rolling into that class as sophomores.
Wow.
We're anticipating, when that shakes out, that'll probably be about 18 students. Those 13 students are going to roll into either the Middle College Concept at Montlo or they'll utilize their other five episodes, and they'll take continuous engineering classes at Montlo or Megatronics their junior and senior year. So they're now in Mr. Reynolds' cohort. ACT is coming up. We've put a lot of effort into that. Very excited about the junior ACT. Want to brag on Mr. Enslie and the people that we have in the high school. We're being very strategic about prepping the students for that test, more so than we probably ever have. So I'm very optimistic about how we're preparing them and what we're doing to be proactive in that. But that's everything I've got going on to catch you up on the grants. Any questions that you guys have?
Speaking of ACT, the 30-plus club is going to need a new wall before too long, right? That's a...
Well, we hope so.
That is really a growing cadre of students. If you haven't seen it lately, it's remarkable.
We got a couple 29s that we're trying to get to.
Oh, yeah.
Take it.
Well, I think it's a neat, neat thing that the high school started, putting the...
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. Mr. Giffen?
I don't really have a whole lot tonight. I would like to tell you that we are beginning the process of doing a rollover for next school year, which means rolling scoured over and generating next year's calendar so that the schools can go ahead and start putting in the courses and letting kids select what they want. So we have some ideas about numbers and those kinds of things. That's coming. And then, of course, we've got spring break next week. And again, we talked about ACT the 27th, and then before you know it, we'll be taking T cap tests around April 15th. We'll start there, and we're going to be there. So, but yeah, things are going really, really good. So, if you have any questions, I'll try to be glad to answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Thanks. Dr. Stiles is here.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thanks. Ms. Jean?
I don't have anything to report.
You don't as well. Okay. Well, thank you for being here and for all you do behind the scenes. All right. That's in this case. Ms. Williams, our CFO.
The February financial reports were emailed to you earlier today, the revenues, expenditures, and I just ask if you have any questions.
I think not.
They jumped the gun a lot this year.
No, it was not jumping the gun. You were fine. Okay. Well, if not now, I'm sure she'll entertain those questions later if you have a, if you think of something you want to ask about those reports. Thanks, thanks again for doing those for us. Committee reports, facilities and transportation.
Yes, sir. I'm pleased to announce that our FEMA grant has moved from TMA back to FEMA in Atlanta, so we've actually had some movement with it.
Awesome.
Yes, this is fantastic news. It's encouraging enough that Greg and I have requested to be able to meet with the utilities board as well as the local planning commission so that we can update them. We've gone before those groups before and met with FPU and had them on grounds, but it's been about a year since we've had any communications with anybody like that, so we want to do an update with those entities as well. Very excited about that. We've also got some people looking at doing some mock-ups and some drawings for an entrance to Ralph Askins. And as those come to fruition, we will definitely share those out with the board. But it's encouraging news. I still haven't heard anything in writing from the new TMA director, but as long as the project's moving, we'll take that as a great indication of progress.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Do we just have a moment of silence and appreciation for, how many months has this been? 18 months almost, right? That we've been kind of on hold. It's been a long hold.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Appreciate you and others who have sort of kept the pressure on as best we could to not let that fall through the cracks too long. But, yeah, that's encouraging. Very, very exciting.
Yes, sir.
And so you're meeting the utility committees will be soon?
This month is the tentative plan. Yes, sir.
Okay. Awesome. Awesome. Thanks.
Yes, sir. And that's the bulk of my report.
Okay. Just for anyone who missed it, Mr. Jones is at a toss, the Superintendent Association meeting in Nashville, and we have technology, so why spend three hours on the road this afternoon and evening? Just use our technology. So thanks to our IT staff and Mr. Giffen who helped set all that up for us. Nothing really on finance tonight, is there? We didn't have any actions to take with the budget or any amendments or anything, so we'll move on to insurance and policy.
I have a few policies tonight. We have a few policies that the committee went over that you don't have any revisions. So I moved that we approve the policies 2.1 through 2.9, with the exception of 2.4, that the committee reviewed with no revisions.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right. we'll move on to insurance and policy.
I have a few policies tonight. We have a few policies that the committee went over that didn't have any revisions. So I move that we approve the policies two point one through two point nine with the exception of two point four that the committee reviewed with no revisions.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right. And then you had one exception to that, right?
Right. I move that we approve two point four zero zero revenues on first reading.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
I move that we approve policy three point two point nine, use of unmanned aircraft systems on first reading.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. And I appreciate the work as, as, appreciate the work the committee did to look into this. I assume that was with some inputs from maybe TSBA or certainly maybe even other school systems. The increased use of drones over school campuses and public places generally is, it's a, not a trivial situation, right? And, and so having a policy, a board policy for this, I really do appreciate y'all spending. I know, I could tell by reading through it, y'all had spent a good amount of time trying to perfect it and tailor it to Thibault. So thank you. Thank you.
I move we...
Oh, wait. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
Sorry.
Okay. Very good. And, and finally...
Sorry.
No, you don't have to be sorry. We're here.
I move to approve policy five point three zero five, family and medical leave on first reading.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Thanks. Well done. All right. Mr. Jones, there are a few things under your superintendent's report. Are you prepared?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I would like to request that the board would approve the Sickly Bank trustee group, which consists of Lisa, Shontae, and myself.
Okay. I'd make a motion, we approve that group for that purpose?
Second.
And a second. And you're okay with, you're okay with that? Okay, okay. All in favor, we say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
I think we met all of them zero times on that thing.
Yeah, I don't think that lead bank committee has to meet very often, right, Mr. Jones? Has it ever met?
No.
It probably has.
I believe it, I believe it met long, long ago, but it hasn't been probably ten years or more, to my knowledge.
So they're on a good roll here.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Super. We voted.
Okay. Next, I would like to request the board approval for tenure for Chad Barnett.
So move?
Second.
Okay. That's exciting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great.
Excellent. I'd now like to request approval of tenure for Lucretia Mitchell.
Second.
Okay. You got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. All right.
Next on the agenda, I would like to request board approval for a trip for the FHS cheerleaders to participate in the ONE finals. This is a championship final tournament for competitive cheerleading. That's April fourth through seventh, and that is in Virginia Beach, Virginia, which obviously would be an overnight trip.
What's their transportation? Bus?
No, transportation would be multiple personal vehicles and a school van.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions, further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great.
Okay. The last thing I have from my report is we, I believe Sandy was contacted by one of our staff members to request that the board would give their okay to approve an organizational meeting of, to determine the interest and provide information about a possible group trip to Greece. If you remember last month, we brought up the possibility of a student group trip to Greece and they want to make sure the board gives their blessing before they put together their informational meeting. So we would like to ask the board to act on that tonight.
Sure. Sure. Sounded like a great opportunity. I'd make a motion, we approve that organizational meeting.
Second.
And I have a second. Anyone with questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
Super.
And that completes my report for the evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. And thanks for joining us virtually.
Yeah, it's been really good. I appreciate Stephen's act putting it together. It's been actually far, it's far above what typical meetings of this nature are in my experience, so I'm grateful for that. Thank you, guys.
Good. Glad you can be here with us. As the board will recall, we, we like to honor our various groups of employees throughout the school year. And today or this month, we have a resolution for your consideration to approve what is dubbed special area teachers. And that includes art teachers, music teachers, PE teachers, technology teachers, speech teachers, school counselors, social workers, and librarians. So lots of special areas that are of very great importance to our school system. And so if you approve this resolution, we, we appreciate all the work they do to support our students. And this resolution would resolve that we establish March 7th, 2024, as Special Area Teachers Appreciation Day in all of our schools and that the board expresses appreciation to all the school employees who provide these services in our school system and we encourage the schools to follow through and honor and recognize these individuals for their role in the success of our school system. And I would make a motion, we approve this resolution.
Yes.
And I have a second. Any discussion or comments?